Right, perfect. So we are reconvened at 10:15. Welcome back.
Hi, this is working? Hello?
Yes, sir.
We're good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mike Bramson, Altamont Springs, President of the Brevard County Firefighters Union. I wanted to take this public comment opportunity to thank the Commissioners. I wanted to thank you for your kind words earlier in this meeting. And I want to take the opportunity to thank the citizens and visitors of Brevard County for their considerations in executing the guidelines of the WHO, the CDC, the Governor, the President of the United States and his Cabinet, and the B.O.C.C., and the suggestions of our internal EOC, Fire Rescue, Public Safety, and the B.O.C.C. These unprecedented guidelines are in place to ensure everyone's safety while considering the worldwide effects of the COVID-19 event. We all have seen the news. By participating in any of these guidelines, any type of guideline, we will then try to get through the COVID-19 event, or whatever it will eventually be deemed, by trying also to ensure the American way of life. And you've already addressed that earlier in the meeting today. I understand that these restrictions, guidelines, and rules are difficult for everyone, including trying to conduct business today. And I also understand that it's upsetting the livelihoods of many of our citizens and visitors and Americans. I'm here to thank everyone for the consideration of these guidelines. There is a campaign, I don't know who started it, I don't know how it became a campaign, but the statement on the Internet is, or public safety, or public comment, or wherever it is, is that the public safety environment goes to work for you guys so that we ask that you stay at home. All I'm asking is that you just follow the guidelines. I'm not sure how it got started. I think it's a great idea just to publicize that there are guidelines that you need to follow. So on behalf of the Brevard County firefighters and with these guidelines, we just wanted to thank the citizens for their consideration. It does help the firefighters, it ensures the safety of our firefighters and all public safety servants. We enter your environment, we're there to help you. The firefighters are able and willing to do everything they need to do, but there is a certain level of risk associated with our job that happens every single day. And with these guidelines, we can reduce certain levels of that risk with what's going on today. And I just wanted to thank and have the opportunity to express that gratitude in a forum like this.
I appreciate you coming out. Let me ask you a question, and I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I think a lot of folks are curious. How are you guys doing in terms of your stockpile or your stock for PPE or BSI?
You'd have to actually address that with public safety across the board, but from the union's point of view, we're very happy with the direction that we got, the support we have from our management leading to what we need to do, how we file our document, the transparency of communication on when we do have a certain event. I will tell you that we are in the thick of it, and we have had our assumed, realistic, documented exposures, whatever you want to put out there. It is a real thing in front of every public safety servant. It's there right now. And right now, we're in good spirits and we're doing what we can, and things are good. As far as the exact what you're actually asking, I will defer that to proper management.
Okay. And I'll just point out as well, I've had conversations with Chief Scholmeyer and with Matt Wallace with respect to making sure that you all are notified when you're the first responders for someone that tests positive for COVID. So I know that that's been relayed to FDOH. Just to be absolutely certain, we get the timeliest possible notification when the epidemiological data comes back so that we can tell whoever responded to the particular call, hey, you guys, you know, you might want to be aware, you may need to take whatever steps may be appropriate. But if the Commission can do anything, or if I can do anything to help you guys with respect to anything that's going on with this health issue that's going about now, you know, let me know, let the Commission know. I think that you have a lot of goodwill up here, so if there's anything that's realistically possible for us to do, I'm fairly confident you're going to get what you need.
We appreciate that. And notification on the citizens who are affected by this and their interaction with us is key. Firefighters, first responders, everybody, they get concerned. You hear the scuttle in wherever you may hear your news, and you worry about, what am I taking home? What am I going to do? You know, do I have to take a bath in bleach? Whatever. So time is of the essence, especially when these type of reports come out. So I appreciate that effort and direction. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And it appears that's it for public comment. So we're going to go ahead and move on. Public hearings, H1, do we have staff presenting that? Do we, Eden, pardon me, Ms. Bentley, what do we need in terms of, to form a good record for this, assuming it's going to pass?
This is simply an amendment to ordinance, Chapter 22, Article 6, Contractors Code of Brevard County. And are there any public speakers?
Anyone? Do we have anyone? Mr. Denninghoff?
No.
Nope?
It's an amendment to come into alignment with Florida statutes.
Sounds like a good reason to amend things. May I have a motion? All right, motion by Commissioner Tabia. I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor of approving item H1, which is the hearing amending ordinance, Chapter 22, Article 6, Contractors Code of Brevard County. Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, we've continued items I1 and I2. New business, J1 was deleted, J2 is continued, J3.
Mr. Chair, we have Kathy Wall upstairs, live from the floater room, if you'd like to give her a briefing. If you don't need a briefing, the only addition we'd like to add is in the requested action, the number is 1.5%. It's actually 1.52%.
Right. And Kathy provided that to me this morning as well. I will add, just for folks, edification, I had an offline conversation with her during the briefing in which I had asked, given that the Fed dropped the rates substantially in the recent past, whether these were really the best rates that we could get, or whether it was worth going out to bid again on it, or seeking another set of bids. She produced a document for me earlier today that had the rates that would be available if we were to go out today, and they're no better. So the fact is, she's done her homework, she's done enough due diligence that I'm satisfied that this really is a good move despite the Fed having dropped the rates since this was obtained as an offer here. So, motion to approve it by Commissioner Pritchett. I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor of approval, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item J3 passes unanimously. So item J4, please.
Not that this might be good or not good, I think this is really bad timing today. So I would like to make a motion to maybe table this. I just don't think this is a good topic for today.
We have a light from, not Mr. Abate as it reads, but Commissioner Tabia. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'll just hold, I have a motion here, but I guess I'll just hold. Since this one's come up, I don't disagree with Commissioner Pritchett's sentiment, so...
Well, before we do anything else, after we have her motion addressed, we'll go to your motion and address that.
Perfect.
So Commissioner Pritchett, I'll go ahead and second that, but let's have a particular date to move that to. Do you want to say six or eight weeks out?
Yeah, I think the first meeting where we come back after this has calmed down a bit, and we're able to have public here to make comments.
That requires a crystal ball to a degree to figure out when it's going to calm down. I mean, how long can this realistically wait? What do you think, Ms. Bentley? I mean, can this wait till after the summer break, or?
There's no timetable on it.
What's the first meeting back after the summer break? Maybe that's the best time to do this?
The first meeting after summer break would be like July 10th, 11th.
I mean, that'll give us a real chance to get this to calm down without hopefully having to continue it again. So July?
I'll have to look it up to get to that.
First July meeting.
We'll just, we'll say the first.
July.
You're really on the ball today, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, July 7th. So the motion to continue this to July 7th from Commissioner Pritchett, I'll go ahead and second it. Again, this is continuing item J4, approval of Board to send letter to the Nature Conservancy, District 4. All in favor of continuing that to July 7th, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, unanimously continued to July 7th. All right, Commissioner Tabia, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this will be a motion to reconsider...
Hang on one second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, we have item J5, that was the late add-on. Apologize for interrupting.
Yeah, we'll go to it right after this, if that's all right.
Okay, sorry, thought you were going.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thanks. This will be a motion to reconsider the tabling of one of the items. As I was in the majority, it would fall somewhere in Roberts, it would be J2, speak up for Brevard. And let me explain real quickly, because I want your input on this one. The Charter 2.9, 10 explains the process. Section C of that reads, "The county commission's final vote in consideration of the recommendation shall occur no later than 120 days after receipt of the written recommendation." This would put us in violation of that. I know we're in a time of unprecedented emergency, but it still would put us in violation of the Charter. So seeing, I've asked to see if any of the people that submitted these have shown up. To the best of my knowledge, there are, there is no one here that is interested in that. So I would like to bring that back up, and then I would take motion to go with staff recommendation on all of them. That would keep them in direct alignment, at least with the Charter.
Yeah, I'll support that as well, but I just want to put out there, you know, the reason for continuing this at the outset was because I think this is a particular item that is likely to generate public input, or that would be likely to generate it but for the issues that we're experiencing. You know, I can tell you, I've had people reach out and tell me, as I think I may have mentioned earlier in the meeting, that they would be here but for the fact that they're in a high-risk group, or but for the fact they have something that predisposes them to this coronavirus. I hate to address this without them present and without them having as much of an opportunity as I think is genuinely fair, but if that's what the Charter requires, I'll support it. I don't like it, but I'll support it.
And I've, I can bounce this over to Ms. Bentley. I asked, you know, what's the penalty clause? There isn't, there apparently is not one. However, running afoul of the Charter, that's a balance that we have to make between citizen input, though we will have made the recommendations. I would certainly believe anyone that wants to show up after this, we'll give them their full consideration next year, or in all honesty, immediately. And in fact, I would waive the three minutes and give them as long as they wanted on it. But I'm a little hesitant. I did not know, I think we all go by sunshine, I did not know the motion would be that, and I didn't have my ducks in a row, so that was my bad on that one.
That's okay. And I don't think there's anything which precludes us, Ms. Bentley, from revisiting any of these that we address at a future date. So my thought is, if someone comes at a future meeting and wants us to address this, if they bring it up during public comment, we can absolutely address it either then and there, if it's something simple, or alternatively, we can set it for the subsequent meeting. And I would be happy to address any of the items that we vote on today in the future, if that's what someone would like. Does that sound fair?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Okay, so your motion, if you just want to restate it for clarity?
Okay, the first motion is to reconsider the motion for tabling of the item J2.
Okay, and you, a second from Commissioner Pritchett, all right? We'll go ahead and call the vote on that. So all in favor of that, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously.
Okay.
And you're next?
Second one would be to accept staff recommendations on all items in SEER 2001.
All right, and we have a second by Commissioner Pritchett for Commissioner Tabia's motion. All in favor of the second motion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously.
And to be clear, it should be 202001 through 2020055, Mr. Chair.
I think that's what everyone's underplayed.
I apologize.
Did anyone have a concern with that? We can readdress it and do another vote if there's a concern. I don't see one, though. Okay, so we'll take that to apply to all of them within that item number?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, yes, sir. All right, we will move on to item J5. Jim?
Sorry for the earlier interruption. Commissioners, the item we had to add on last, that was a mistake of us putting the agenda together, but this is asking for confirmation of Mark Bernath as the new Public Works Director. He was interviewed by John Denninghoff and Frank Avati as final interviews. They wish to hire him. If you all confirm him, he will be arriving here in July.
You think he's going to be a good guy to work with?
If Frank and John says he's a good guy to work with, he's going to be a good guy to work with.
John, just give me a wink if you have any concerns. Just, you know, tug on your ear a little bit. No concerns? All right, maybe we have a motion? All right, motion. Is that a new light, or is that an old one? Commissioner Tabia?
An old one.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, a second from Commissioner Tabia. All in favor of confirming, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, looks like we got a new director here. Okay, so public comment, do we have any for the second public comment period, Mr. Denninghoff? Nope. All right, we don't have any public comment under K as Kilo, Al's in Lima. We'll go ahead and just allow everyone to say their piece here as well, even though we addressed some of this at the forefront of the meeting. Mr. Abate's not here, Mr. Liesenfeld or Mr. Denninghoff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two items. The April 2nd Planning and Zoning Meeting does not have any Planning and Zoning items ready to go, so if you wish to cancel it, we could take a motion to cancel that meeting.
Anyone have anything they intend to put on that meeting before we cancel it? All right, everyone's keeping a low profile. So may I have a motion to cancel the April 2nd P&amp;Z meeting? All right, I'll go ahead and second the motion by Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor of canceling April 2nd's P&amp;Z meeting, which doesn't have any P&amp;Z items, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting's canceled unanimously.
And Mr. Chair, I just spoke with Frank earlier this morning, we have, just want to let people know that, you know, even though we're going through this emergency, we're working on the emergency side of the world, that we're keeping the government service open at the same time. And just want to highlight a couple of things we're doing to help keep our employees safe and work with the citizens. With our employees, we've worked out, we put out, we have the directors working with all the employees, for options for employees that can telecommute, changing workspace, alternative scheduling. We are working on leave policy. If they're, you know, if employees uncomfortable where they're at, we can work with them on that side. And then, just to let you know how the staff is setting up, we sent an email out, and I'm just going to highlight a couple, a handful of items here, what departments are doing. A bunch of departments are doing many things. You have the landfills are still open. Utilities are providing all inspections, water connections and permits. They are not shutting, they are not working on water shut-offs and MIMS in Barefoot Bay. Public safety, Mr. Bramson talked a little bit about it. Fire rescue's been using the PPEs and suspected COVID cases since that started in January. EOC is screening all who enter the facilities in March. Housing and Human Services, they're working with telephone, email, and occasional in-person assignment. Natural Resources is continuing all their services and projects. They have an email process for intake of permits. Planning Development is still providing building inspections. They're working on guidelines on their inspectors and how they work, visit the different sites. You have Transit that actually is running extra buses to keep the crowds down, to make sure we meet our social distancing. Communications given 40 interviews. Support agencies like Information Technology and Purchasing and Budget, and those folks are, they're working onsite and offsite to help us continue on. And then last, for the public, you know, you guys touched a little bit on EOC. The public's used to seeing a beehive of activities, the direct quote here during the emergencies. The EOC is activated, they are coordinating all the meetings, response and activities, but a lot of it has been done on a remote and virtual basis, and, you know, to keep with our social distancing. And then the last thing to point out is how staff stepping up in this. You see the very unusual meeting standards we put here. Make sure the public can give full public comment and be safe, but we have a number of employees that were outside and came together after a couple rehearsals to make sure we can get all the public who want to speak can speak to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bentley?
I just want to say our office is open and working, subject to the same safety regulations as the rest of the staff.
Perfect. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I just want to maybe bring some hope to the community a little bit. I really appreciate the President and the government with what the message they're bringing. And I love what the President said the other night, that don't let the cure be worse than the virus. And so I just want to throw out to people, don't let the fear of this be worse than it. You know, be smart, you know, wash your hands, do all the things you need to do, but try to find some normal and not become anxious to where you're getting yourself run down and stressed. It makes you more susceptible to pick up sickness and diseases. I know you have to balance that, but we are going to get through this. We are going to end up on the other side. One of my favorite books as a young woman was by Robert Schuler, and it was called Tough Times Never Last, But Tough People Do. And we're going to get through this. So y'all keep some hope in your heart. We've been through things before, and we'll get through this also. And try to find some normal in your life while we're having to make all these adjustments and changes. That's all I wanted to say, sir. And thank you, guys, for all you're doing up here on the Commission Board and county staff. And I appreciate you a lot for taking leadership.
I appreciate you saying that. You know, and I'll say, one of the items we discussed earlier is the fact that Commissioners can speak with one another for items that don't pertain to Commission business. I did want to give a shout out to Commissioner Pritchett. She did call me earlier to see how I was doing during all of this craziness over the past week. I certainly appreciate that. It's nice to work with human beings up here. So I'll point out as well, there are a lot of things the county is doing. The EOC has been very good about moving to a virtual EOC concept, where we're having people work remotely, where they're able to do so and still be productive. They've instituted a requirement to check everyone's temperature before they're allowed in the bunker. When this first started, we were not doing that. When this got underway a little bit more, they started doing that. So they are definitely taking the guidelines that are being promulgated to the public rather seriously and doing them themselves. They're basically operating the EOC workers regardless of whether they have a pre-existing health condition, as though they had one, in order to keep the best possible practices in place. I'll tell you, this is kind of an unprecedented time, wholly unprecedented, at least in my lifetime, in that, among other things, we've had from the Governor, we had an order canceling all non-emergency surgery in the state. I have never heard of that before. I don't think it's ever occurred before, certainly not during my lifetime. It doesn't mean just non, you know, pardon me, just elective procedures. We're not talking about facelifts and things like that. I mean, we're talking about back surgeries. We're talking about things like orthopedic surgery, necessary surgeries that aren't technically emergencies. There are some exceptions. I believe malignant tumors are an exception, which are understandable, but there is a concerted effort to make sure that first responders and emergency workers are able to access all the protective equipment that they need. They don't want it being used in surgeries that can wait. I think that just speaks to the fact that everyone is mobilizing what they can to try to get this thing under control. So, you know, you hear different timelines from folks, ranging from, oh, we're right around the corner, and this will be over before we know it, to six to eight months. Who knows? Truly, who knows how long this is going to take? I'm taking it day by day and operating based upon the best available information as it comes in. But, you know, the biggest thing is, as Commissioner Pritchett said, this is not to downplay things at all. If you're in a high-risk group, either by age, or by pre-existing condition, or both, this is no joke by any means. But someone that's young and healthy, that doesn't have a pre-existing condition, that disposes them or predisposes them to this, you can't make yourself crazy. I'm not saying go and do the European cheek kissing with everyone that you meet, but, you know, if you follow the guidelines, you can have a normal life and not make yourself stir crazy, for want of a better term. Just try to take everything in stride, do what you can. You know, if you want to order a pizza, order a pizza, so you're not cooking every single day, if that's what you want to do. But understand, this is going to pass. Whether it passes in two weeks or eight months, I don't know, but this is something we just have to get through. It's unfortunate. I wish we didn't have it, but we do, and it's a reality that I think we're all dealing with. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's wonderful, all of the things the county has stepped up to do. I'm just hoping that we potentially can do a little bit more. And I try to stop from putting these in board reports, but as this is a fluid situation, I certainly would like to get your input on these type of things. Small businesses clearly are struggling. We're very fortunate to have, never so fortunate to have government jobs, right? And as an educator, it was a very easy switch to online education, but small businesses don't have the luxury that we do. And while local government may have the ability to keep these businesses afloat, I think there are probably some mitigating factors we can do to not kick these folks when they're down. So I asked staff, and I wanted to see where you were on this one. By no means is this an exhaustive list, but this is certainly things I think that we can do as a county. One would be waiving the annual business tax receipts. I spoke with Tad, and this is about $40. Again, this is not going to keep a business afloat, but when a business is not open, and they get a letter from the county asking for $40 to stay in business, I just think that that's probably not the best timing. There are fire inspection fees. That one, again, is only $25, so it's very reasonable, but I don't know that that is probably what, the accounting that goes into it probably on small businesses more than the actual costs, certainly. And these other are waiving repair permit for things like air conditioners. Another fee that, in these tough times, probably is not going to break the bank on the county's perspective, but certainly could be problematic. There are other things on there that may have a larger impact, and staff is looking at those. Those would be not waiving, but holding payment on utilities for businesses until after the national, or the state, or the county emergency. But I think it would be a little premature to find out, or to offer that, without having any explanation of what the potential impacts. So, you know, I've spoken with Tad. Again, it was just yesterday, so there's not been much time, but we haven't had the opportunity to, you know, to spend as much time as probably I'd like to on that. But the low-hanging fruit, again, would be to waive the annual business tax receipts, waive the fire inspection fees, and waive the repair permits. I wanted to find out where folks were on this. And again, please, if you have other suggestions, I'm more than willing to listen. I think this is probably a good first step. We should probably start, I imagine, what we do in times of other emergencies like hurricanes, and then go from there, as this is going to be much, much longer. I just wanted to find out where we were on any of this stuff. And again, this is the one thing that I actually tried to prevent other Commissioners from doing, was putting financial things on board reports. Hopefully, when I did it a year and a half ago, I put the clause in there, unless there's a time of emergency. If I didn't, then, you know, I'm going against what I said in the past, but I think that this probably warrants at least a discussion, you know, as we move forward. And I would go as far to say, if you're not comfortable here, if this is something that the Chair could act on, I would certainly delegate that. Once you've got the exact dollar figures back from staff on this one, I appreciate their diligence to move as quickly as possible, and it's my bad for not confronting this at a sooner point, but I want to do everything that we can as a county to help the businesses, the small businesses that are hurting right now.
I just, and I'll jump in after Commissioner Pritchett, but I just want to say, I don't want that authority, so please don't vote to give me the authority to do that. I really don't want it. Commissioner Pritchett?
I am in agreement with this, Commissioner Tabia. I think what's already happened of last week and a half is very significant to our economy. I think we're going to be feeling a big hit. You know, it's interesting, I saw the stock market crash, the housing, the banking. I was wondering what was going to happen next, because we're a little late on the next time period. I had no idea it was going to be a virus that would do this, but I think we have a significant economic crisis, and it's going to start showing up very soon. So I'm in favor of this, sir. I think anything we can do to help keep businesses afloat, it's good for the whole economy, if we can keep that happening and keep people employed. So you have my support, sir.
All right, I'll go ahead and jump in. Without knowing what the aggregate amounts are, I don't know, even for something like a $40 business license, that I could just vote to waive that at this point. I might be willing to do that. I might well be willing to do that, based on the total impact. But my concern is, anytime we're doing something that impacts our intake of funds, without our expenditures going down, it puts us in a situation that's tough insofar as avoiding raising taxes for subsequent years. I don't want to spend down reserves any more than we have to, but I understand that we may have to with something like this. I would just ask that folks consider, as an alternative, if the numbers are such that it really would impact us as a county, or deplete our reserves to a dangerous level, that we look at perhaps extending deadlines substantially with each of those things, adding six months or a year, without any penalty for the extension, for repair permit fees, or fire inspection fees, or extending deadlines, business licenses, things of that nature. I wouldn't mind giving folks, you know, eight months, 10 months, 12 months, whatever the case may be, to allow for things to recover, and for folks to have a meaningful income again, or a similar income to what they're used to experiencing again, before we start requiring them to pay us. So I don't mind doing that, but I really am cautious. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, I don't feel warm and fuzzy about the idea of waiving something until we know exactly what the financial impact would be to us, because if all we're doing is kicking it down the road and putting ourselves in a position where we'll have to raise taxes, we're delaying the inevitable. we'll have to raise taxes, we're delaying the inevitable and we might as well just extend a deadline so that we don't have to do that. Commissioner Pritchett?
I do agree with all that. I'm, just from just taking a look at what I think's coming down the pike, we're going to have to do a lot of cuts here soon because we're going to have a real lack of tax dollars. But on, just being on the flip side of that, Commissioner Tabaya, if you would come up with a recommended time period, that would be awesome. Maybe we could just kind of keep an eye on that. But if these businesses go out of business, these aren't going to be fees we'll collect from them regardless. So it's a way of maybe keeping them afloat because you'll still get revenue on their business doing well during the year. So actually, it actually might help us a bit in the long run if we can keep these businesses surviving. Just a thought.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Smith, and then Commissioner Tabaya?
Coming from the small business community, I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Tabaya's proposal. However, I haven't had any time to think about it, and any feel-good measure comes with a little hang in the back of my brain that says, well, what about unintended consequences? And I can't think of any unintended consequences that would be a detriment to us, but I would prefer to wait for the next meeting before we made this decision. One thing that I just thought of, though, was that if we suspend the fees for a renewing of a business, for example, is what one thing he mentioned, do we do that for one month or two months? We don't know because we have to think about it some more. But the other thing I'm thinking is that what about all the businesses that their renewals don't occur until August or September? Are we going to waive all of them for the entire year for everybody? Because they could likely say, well, what about me? How come me? I'm just, and I don't, I don't think that that would be impediment, but that's just my thoughts, my random thoughts, but I really like the idea in general.
Commissioner Tabaya?
Mr. Chair, these are all very good points. Could I make, my motion would be to not waive, but certainly not send out any bills until our next meeting, which would be April the 7th, and ask staff to come with a report as to what the total cost of these items would be, as well as other suggestions that we may have that could help ameliorate, not fix, but at least get close to some normalcy. And Commissioner Smith brings up some very good equitable points. Unfortunately, our system just isn't set up that way. Someone with Homestead may be paying a quarter of property taxes as the neighbor is right next door. But I think that we need to come together as a community, and I think one business that would have to pay $40 three months down the road wouldn't, I don't know that they would find any acrimony with a business that was struggling and billing them for those, you know, $40. If we were talking about taxes altogether, that would be, you know, one thing different. This is just something that, an added burden of going into a business, opening mail, writing a check when maybe your accountant, you know, you've had to lay off and not knowing where the checks are is just, is just problematic. So the motion, again, would be to not waive, but suspend billing till our next meeting and ask staff to come back with a report as to certain things that we could do to help small businesses.
I'll second it for discussion, but by next meeting, if we do call an emergency meeting, whether it's tonight after 4:30 or otherwise, I take it you mean the next regularly scheduled meeting?
I, which I've been informed is April the 7th.
Perfect, so we'll take it to mean that. So does staff?
As part of that discussion, can I?
Please.
Jump in here?
Please.
Commissioner Tabaya stimulated another idea in my head. Instead of us waiving fees during this period because we don't know how long the period is going to be, maybe we could consider suspending fees until after it's over, or maybe even saying until the end of the third quarter.
I really like that idea.
Anyway, everybody's still responsible, but they would have a chance to get back, their business back in full force and start getting some income, and they would not incur any penalties for being late. Something for us to consider.
Mr. Chair?
I like that.
I think it's a great idea. I still would like staff to come back with other suggestions. These are ones that came off the top of our head in the office, as well as with a brief consultation with TAD. So if there's more things that we could do that, other than just these three, again, utilities was another one that we could do to help the small businesses, that certainly would. But if that's, if that's, I don't think 40 or 60 bucks is going to stop any business but, you know, from going out of business, but I think, you know, suspending till later is a great idea.
Does staff have any concerns that there are any sort of unintended consequences with respect to this that we're not aware of? I mean, is there something that would create a logistical nightmare by doing this?
First answer would be, we'd have to take a look at it, and as, you know, as we come up with ideas, then we'd see if there's any unintended consequences before we bring it to you. I mean...
But nothing stands out at the moment?
Well, they just, I only caught bits and pieces of it. They only started talking about this late afternoon, so they're still in the idea phase, so they got to put it down on paper and bring it back to you guys.
No, I mean, in terms of suspending the billing until our next meeting, that portion of it?
I, without, you know, let's, TAD is upstairs, he can jump in. I'm not exactly sure how they work their billing function, if that's an automatic or, you know, you know, April 1st, they send out every notices and they have to stop their contract or something. Outside of that, I'm not sure.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Tabaya, would you consider modifying or mending your motion to say, to authorize Planning and Developments Director to do this if it's feasible? Because if there's something that really makes this prohibitively difficult, I don't, I don't want him to end up pulling his hair out.
Yeah, absolutely. Give the County Manager's Office the ability to make the determination if this is something that wouldn't cost taxpayers more money by, I mean, that's the worst situation, that it would cost $20,000 to save businesses $10,000. You might as well do away with the fee, yeah, within reason, and then bring back to us the April 7th meeting if there's a more efficient way or other ideas that you have that we can help small businesses that, and a good place to start again is what we do in hurricane situations.
All right, second stance, Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I thought when we started the discussion that Commissioner Tabaya wanted to get our input on it so he could go get some more data and bring it back. And I think the initial idea is wonderful, so I'm still very in support of that, sir, when we get the information back, but I think you have good intentions. So as far as doing all the other things, I think his original thought of getting some information today and then coming back to us, I'm definitely in support of your idea, sir.
I don't know if you want to, you want to sever the motions or basically make it two motions instead of one, because it sounds like you're going to get 50% of what you want without a question, and the other, I don't know, in terms of suspending the billing for the present time. Commissioner?
Commissioner Smith, are you going to, are you going to hold with me on your, I'm, I'll hold with you. I mean, it was your, it was your good idea.
That's cheating.
Yeah, 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 well, there's a microphone, so this is all fair now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so you want to make that motion? I'll second it, Commissioner Smith?
Do you want to throw out your whole motion?
Yeah, I'll throw out, I'll throw out the, my whole motion. I'll go with the second one that Commissioner Pritchett discussed, which was getting a report back from staff. I don't know that we need that, but we'll make that one. But I, Commissioner Smith, do you want to make the motion since it was your good idea?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what I, my inclination would be to, for us to consider waiving all penalties and fees on businesses until the third quarter of this fiscal year.
It sounded like waiving, but yeah, let's, yeah, because that's, I think that's separate than...
Well, we're not, we're not, we're not going to waive them completely. What we're doing is we're giving them the benefit of the doubt that they don't have to pay that 40 bucks or incur any penalties because they didn't pay the 40 bucks until such time as they're back in business. And I would hope that anybody that survives until the third quarter is going to be in business and will be able to pay their penalties and fees.
So essentially, we're extending the deadline then?
And just to be clear, Jim's hair is on fire and he doesn't have much, so.
Sorry. Commissioners, I hate to be technical, the start of the third quarter is next week, so if you want to suspend it, you want to start to the, start of the fourth quarter.
Let's say, let's say September 1st. That works?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I will, I will second that motion.
Can, I just want to make sure, because I've heard so many things discussed here. I'm not clear on what the motion is.
Okay, was it to not withhold, but to suspend payment of?
Correct.
Or billing?
For billing of business tax receipts, fire inspection fees and repair permits?
And all penalties incurred because they didn't pay on time.
Yes, that's, makes it even better.
Okay, so we're voting on whether to suspend the billing and any penalties that may be associated with late payment with respect to those bills that were suspended until, we said September 1st?
Correct.
All right, everyone's clear on that?
And can we also modify to give, within, if staff finds an unintended consequence, to amend it accordingly?
Perfect, I'll go ahead and second that. Is that okay, everyone?
Yes.
All right. So all in favor of the motion, the long motion stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Do we have a second motion, or are we going to leave it at that for now?
Just, I don't think we need a motion, but just ask staff if they have any other suggestions, things that missed. Can you bring that back to our attention at the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll bring back Agenda Report and put it on the agenda for you.
Thank you so much.
Jim, you guys don't need a motion as far as doing any...
No, well, that's, direction's good enough that we'll put it on for you for the, for your consideration.
Okay, we'll leave it at that. All right. So let's see, who do we have left? Commissioners Smith and Isnardi in that order. Board reports, anything beyond what we had at the beginning of the meeting?
Yeah, I would like to offer a big pat on the back and a huge congratulations to our fellow Commissioner Christine Isnardi for completing the studies for her nursing PhD.
Nice. All right, good job. We'll bring a cake.
That's a, yeah, that's a huge accomplishment, and I can't offer up enough kudos.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And to Commissioner Lober, being Chair, has many challenges, and along with those challenges come headaches, so just stick with it and keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. All right.
And lastly, lastly, to our entire county staff and my fellow commissioners, just stay safe and be smart.
All right, Dr. Isnardi, you have the floor.
Please don't call me that. Anyway, thank you so much, Commissioner Smith. I appreciate that. Him and I were chatting before the meeting, and I mentioned that I'd completed my education last week, and he was congratulating me, so thank you so much for that. It was a long haul, but definitely worth it. I was going to start out talking a little bit about the coronavirus, but, you know, talk a little bit about what Commissioner Tabaya said about small businesses, probably what we can do as a community as well is obvious and, you know, all over the internet and talked about at length, is to make sure that we're supporting them as much as possible. I know a lot of them have their doors shut and their dining rooms closed, and they're working at minimal pace and have had to lay off a lot of workers, so make sure that you're eating out. I know Commissioner Smith and I were talking about takeout and stuff. Make sure that you're supporting these small businesses, because oftentimes, these are those same small businesses that sponsor our kids' baseball teams and donate enormous amounts of resources to the community. So let's make sure that we're doing our part too by keep, helping them keep their hour on and their doors open. So with that, you know, regarding the coronavirus and the messaging and all that, you know, when in doubt, follow the CDC guidelines. I mean, this is what we do as an organization that I work for and as a healthcare provider. It's important that we look to those guidelines because those change as well. You know, they put these guidelines out because, you know, they're the ones that have done the research. So if we're following these guidelines and we're referring to the World Health Organization, we're doing our part. So I would just encourage people, when in doubt, because there's a lot of good and a lot of bad things on the internet and on Google and otherwise, and I just want to tell people, you know, when in doubt, go back to the guidelines, go back to the experts. And also, too, I just wanted to give a shout out to our fellow healthcare workers. I mean, this is why I'm not at this meeting, because it was deemed it's safest for me not to attend, and that's fine, and I'm perfectly okay with that. But, you know, healthcare workers, law enforcement, first responders, and many of our government workers are at the front lines of this virus, and I just want to encourage my brothers and sisters and fellow workers to be safe, obviously. And, you know, our residents to thank one once in a while. I mean, not me personally, but in kind of a way, we should thank our first responders for not hesitating to do their job and to keep us all safe, so. And also, too, a group of individuals that gets lost in this mix is our retail workers. You know, we have to make sure that we're respecting them. I mean, they're working hard to give us those supplies that so many of us have decided they want, unfortunately, but, you know, those people come in contact with hundreds of people throughout the day and money and everything else that puts them at risk. So be gentle, be respectful, and let's take care of one another. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Anything else before we adjourn? All right, we're adjourned at 11 o'clock. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Commissioner.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.